All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order if we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, in the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a peace and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom, here. Ms. Lehman, Mrs. Ms. Lewis, here. Mr. Nally.
Here.
Mr. Price.
Here. Thinking a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting held July fourteenth, twenty twenty five, please.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion? I lost my agenda, sorry. Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom, yes. Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motion's approved. Sorry, let me get back to my screen here. Moving on to legislative report, Don.
Ah, yes, just a couple of things. You know, as we've seen, the House approved their budget proposal. The governor has signed and vetoed a number of items. Three of the key items that there was consideration that the House was going to be looking at. They only took up one of those items. And that particular item was the dealt with property tax levy restrictions. And as I understand it, you know, with the levies that we have, correct me if I'm wrong, Meghan, this isn't really going to impact us at all because we don't have replacement levies and.
Right, it doesn't affect those levies that we currently have. It would just be if we had to work considering those in the future, they're now off the table.
Right. Thank you. The other thing, just based on all, I think, one of the other items that was vetoed and was under consideration. The governor is reacting by putting together a property tax reform working group. And there's a little bit more information, and I did some cut and pasting again in the legislative report that I send to all of you and is available through the superintendent's office after the meeting. The what what he has asked for is concrete proposals by September thirtieth. It's hard to imagine that a work group will be able to accomplish that in the the short period of time. But that's kind of the goal right now, to get some proposals together. And I think with that working group, there are two representatives, one from a large school district in Ohio and one from a small, and they're both superintendents. And actually, from ones from Dublin City Schools. And the other one is from Fort Fry Local Schools, which is a very small school district way down in southeast Ohio. I had to do some Google searching to figure out where that was. So that's some of the key. And also, one of the things that he vetoed was the forty percent cash balance carryover. So I don't think that got was taken back up to for an override, which means there's, as I understand it, there's, there's nothing, there's not a cash balance carryover amount anymore. Is that? Is that how you read it?
Yeah, except for he does have up until like December thirty first of twenty twenty, or not he. The different legislations have until December thirty first of two thousand twenty six to try to override any of his vetoes. Yes, cool, we love it. I watched your webinar today and got more confused than when I went in, so.
December of twenty twenty six?
Yeah.
What is that going to help? We're halfway through the biennial budget then.
I don't know.
This amazes me every day.
And I, and it's a lie.
That doesn't make any sense. Well, we can veto it up until halfway through the biennial budget. Oh, okay, that makes sense.
As they're preparing for the next biennial budget.
Yeah, they're already talking about the next one, so.
And and the concern there is with the discussion on that next biennial budget, there's already the concern from our side of the table as to what they're going to do with the fair school funding plan. And that, you know, that is a very scary thing based on some of the words we're hearing out of the legislature toward. I guess the the big thing is, will they follow the directive? And the the judge, the judge, the courts reaffirmed the constitution of our state that says what, I'm losing my train of thought there with that the dollars are supposed to go toward our public school system and not the Ed choice and the voucher system, so. I think that story is to be continued, but I think it's imperative that we continue to realize that even though we're seeing the budgets approved or moving forward, that we need to continue to fight to get those maximized dollars for our public school system. That's all I had.
You know, it's amazing to me that this whole thing is really based around property taxes, just because of how much they've gone up. But the whole premise of property taxes, nobody likes, nobody has since it's probably its inception because we pay tax on our property when we purchase it. Why do we need to pay tax on it every year continuing? The problem is, is they've put things in there that are funded by property taxes. So now there's the big uproar. And oh, yeah, now we'll figure it out. Well, come on. It shouldn't have been a thing forever and a day anyway. Why am I paying tax continuing on something? I don't pay tax on my car every year.
Don't start nothing. Don't start nothing, Mr. Price.
Based on all the needs and services we have in our state. If if we're not doing that through property taxes, then we're going to be doing it through income tax or sales tax and.
So the flip side to that is there are probably a lot of things that are being used out of income tax or sales tax already that the state has no business funding. If they stick to what we're supposed to fund as a state, I think we'd be okay. But we've got so many things, I mean, we see it in the educational system. How many things are put into place that is ridiculous that a public school district has to do? And don't get me on the tangent of what we have to do compared to another type of school.
Right.
But so I think if the state would stay in its lane as to what it should fund, there's plenty of money for what needs to be funded. In my opinion.
You think so?
I do.
Yeah. Well, I I guess I would disagree just in the sense that I just see that we have many other needs. And especially as things are being forced back down from the federal to the state level, those needs are going to again become greater. And we're going to need additional dollars for those, so. I I'm sure there's areas that, you know, maybe we shouldn't as a state be funding. But I think there's just a lot of needs that are out there that are legitimate. And, you know, we just need to be able to to fund those, and it's going to take one tax or another. Thank you.
All right, any walk on items? Moving on to the community, if anybody wants to speak to board. So going on to superintendent's report.
Fantastic, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Price, Board members, Ms. Parkers. I would like to start tonight just with a a quick shout out. I had shared this honor that our Ross High School has received previously with you. But a beautiful plaque has come in the mail. And so I thought, what better place than to once again make sure that our community all knows what a fantastic building that we have and that Ross High School is a winner in the terms of the building and construction world. So our building, Ross High School, is the winner this year in the state of Ohio for the Green Building Challenge. And this was designed to match up with the environmental stewardship and dedication to the environmental practices that we as a district took into account when we were building our building. This is not just the well being and physical aspect of being sound, but it also plays into the mental health aspects that are abound in our building. So things such as our instructional stairway or the opportunities that we purposely built into Ross High School for students to be able to step out of the classroom for some additional assistance and work with another adult or work with a peer of students. And those types of things are built into the building, so a very environmentally physical and healthy, mental, healthy building. So we will make sure that this plaque gets hung up at Ross High School in our four years so that our our community who enters our building can see that. But I thought, just a fantastic way. Our contractors, TDA, are who submitted us for this honor, and we shared that award with them back in the spring, May-ish, April. It's kind of a wash. A wash, go let out, yes. So just wanted to make sure that you were all very aware of that. Our buildings are very much coming along. We are working very hard behind the scenes. Summer is not over yet. I did run into a student and they looked at me and said, nope, don't say it, Mrs. Hurt. And there's lots of learning and lots of fun that can still take place this summer. So I encourage everyone to use every ounce of summer that they have. But I would like to share with you that our maintenance and our custodial staff are truly working very, very hard behind the scenes to make sure that our buildings will be ready when August does come. Thank you. Part of our report this evening, I would like to introduce to you Mr. Jim Boss. He is our Director of Student Services. Mr. Boss is finishing his first full year in the district. And this has been a wonderful year for him to be such an active member of our team. He has brought a wealth of knowledge and has really found his way to incorporate his philosophy into some very established pieces in our district that have done, we have, we have been historically doing very, very well. So I'm very, very excited to have Mr. Boss share with you. He's going to review some highlights with our new student handbook to get us ready for the next school year, which is on our agenda this evening. And he just finished his special education annual meeting, so he's going to also tip on some highlights of our special education world. So welcome, Mr. Boss, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurt, Board of Education. Great to see you all. As Mrs. Hurt alluded to, this is the end of year one for me and awesome, awesome year. A lot of tremendous people that I have the opportunity to work with here in Fremont City Schools, unbelievable community, our parents, students, just, just a great place to be. So very honored to sit in front of you a year later and feel that way. It's awesome. So thank you for letting me take a little bit of your time tonight. I'm going to first start with just some some brief comments about some special education updates as it relates to this past school year. We just did have our part B funding conversation, and I was super excited that we had some people show up because I've done this before in a previous district many times and have not had the opportunity to have some conversations. So it was, it was really, really cool to have the the chance to do that here in July of all times. So just some brief highlights, special education from this past school year. Each year, every district in Ohio receives a special education rating, and they also receive a special education profile with with just a ton of data that's collected across multiple data sources. Our special education rating came in at a perfect score, which are in all compliance ratings. So things like, are we getting special education evaluations done in a timely fashion? Are we serving students in the in the locations and environments that are appropriate for their needs? You know, are we providing transition services for our students aged fourteen and up? I can report to you one hundred percent. That's the number because that's the goal. So ultimately, we have met all those requirements. Are our students graduating through traditional pathways at a high level? The answer to that is yes. And according to our dropout data, are we ensuring that our students with disabilities are not dropping out at high levels? And the answer to that is yes as well. So some really positive pieces of data coming out of that. And very excited to see that here. Our special education profile also highlights a few different areas. A lot of compliance, there's some testing data in there. Are there some areas for testing purposes that we need to continue to grow in? Absolutely. For our students with disabilities, and those will be things that we continue to work toward and strive toward over the coming years. But again, some some very positive pieces coming out of our profile and our special education rating. So a great year. And at the end of the day, that's about our our staff. That's the work that they do every day in the classroom with our students. That's about our families and the work they do from the time kids get up and get home from school. So so some very positive things there. One other highlight for the board tonight. I didn't know that we would be making some transitions between ESCs this year before I took this position, but I can tell you, I can report to you, this year has been very, very busy, very, very active in that process, but also incredibly smooth and probably smoother than I would have ever anticipated. And that's a tribute to our administration here, to you all as board members, and quite frankly, the the administration at North Point ESC as well. The relationship has been highly collaborative, very open. And the reality is, the majority of the positions that were transitioning between ESCs fall under special education. Almost all of them, actually. And so I've been very hands on in that process, and I can report to you it has been incredibly, incredibly smooth. One highlight for us is that we were able to secure a very talented preschool to fifth grade special education coordinator. Mr. Thomas Borton previously filled that position for us the last couple of years through North Central ESC. And we've brought on Brittany Feist, who is, lives right down the street here in town. And so she's got twenty years of experience in early childhood ed, both in the private and public sectors. Most recently, she was at Old Fort Schools as their special education director and their preschool director. And so her resume and background fit perfect for our pre K five special education needs here in district. She's also served as an executive director at an early childhood autism center at one point in her career. And she's got a couple kiddos, one of those students here at Fremont Middle School, being eighth grader this coming year. So just, just very excited to have her on board. The knowledge and background that she began, she's already been in a couple of times, right? And just trying to bring her up to speed a little bit, which is funny because I'm reliving my past July where Mrs. Abernathy was bringing me up to speed last year. And she has hit the ground running. I mean, we're, we're, you talk about transitioning between ESCs and some of the nuances of that, all of our preschool programming is through our ESC. When you make that transition, all of a sudden, your preschools no longer exist because they transitioned from one ESC and now they don't exist, and now you have to start them again at your new ASC. She was already doing that before I knew that that was a thing. Like, she was already making phone calls and and sending emails and getting things going, so. Very excited to have her on board. She is going to be a huge asset to this district, and she's going to be a great part of our team. From my perspective, very, very positive year. I talked with Mrs. Hurt at my evaluation, just such a great place to be. Fremont City Schools, unbelievable place to be. And the team here, the the team approach to what we do is unmatched. So just very much looking forward to continued positive momentum that that has been built in this district, so. Any questions as it pertains to special education? Those are some of the highlights I just wanted to make sure to to hit with you all tonight.
Moreover, an observation.
Sure.
Just watching you conduct the meeting, you had a mix of professionals, parents, maybe guardians, maybe grandparents, maybe people who are already employed with the district. The fact that everybody was here and they knew you and you knew them was pretty impressive. Because somebody at your level, you know what I mean, might not know, just based on, you know, your job description and what you do, might not have those boots on the ground every day and be able to know everybody. But the fact that you've established relationships with people and they know you and were very comfortable in asking what seemingly could have been some tough questions, which you fielded really well, that speaks volumes, so job well done.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yep.
All right. If nothing else on special education, we'll transition over to student handbooks. We made some changes this year, as we do every summer, to our student handbooks, and a lot of those are driven by legislation. And some of the requirements that come out of legislation and then ultimately to board policy and then into our student handbooks. I do have some thank yous. Our principals and assistant principals, holy cow, just unbelievable. And making sure that they're aligning their practices of what's actually in our handbooks. And if that wasn't the case, we went kind of page by page and made sure that what we're doing fits with what we say we're doing. So so kudos to to that group of professionals. And one more, if I don't throw it out, she'll be mad at me if I do, but I'm going to throw her out anyway. Gina Heinlein, I mean, everybody knows Gina, just unbelievable at making sure that these documents are. I mean, she redesigned cover pages and and Mr. Parker helping with that too, and and just just helping with a lot of the changes. I know in your packets, you should have a memo in there, you should have likely received both updated handbooks along with a probably a page and a half of the changes that were made in there. I'll just hit a few of the highlights, and then if you have questions, certainly would would be willing to field those as well. Some of the more significant highlights would be updates to cell phone policy. You know, that's the most important thing to kids, right, is is cell phone.
And parents.
Yeah, and parents, right? So again, just aligning to legislation for us at this point. And this wasn't a major overhaul because we made a lot of these changes last school year. And from the reports from our building administrators, a lot of really positive things came out of those changes. So the changes that you see in the handbook this year really just align us to current state law. And they also align us to the practices that we were already employing as it relates to cell phone. So that's one one area there. We also added a technology privacy notification, again, driven by legislation requiring notifications to parents. And then one other thing that you'll probably note, or I would like you to note, is we did add a disclaimer to both handbooks. Legislation, as a legislatively is, Mr. Nally, I'm sure you know, moves a little faster than we can make changes to our student handbooks. So a lot of times we'll get to the end of the school year, and there'll be several items that require updating, and they changed last September. So we did put a disclaimer in just to note that if there are legislative or board policy updates, that those are going to prevail. You know, we're not going to update the handbook every time a stroke of the pen happens on on a piece of legislation, but that piece is in there as well.
Right.
Any any additional questions, anything that you would want to point out regarding the changes to the student handbooks for both FMS and Ross and our elementaries? All good? All right. Well, thank you all for your time tonight.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Price, if you're comfortable, I will continue.
Yep.
Wonderful. Item number one, I would like you to consider approving those student handbooks for next school year that Mr. Boss just gave us an overview on.
Can I get a motion to approve item one, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion?
I just, just a comment, I, I think that whole process and involvement of the people you commented about and our leadership teams being involved. Also, Mrs. Bloom and I being with the policy committee, just having that opportunity to look those over as a board. You know, prior to the the final approval. It's been a good process, and I think a lot of i's have been dotted and t's have been crossed. And so I I'm just very impressed with with that. And I think it's a very work, they're workable documents and understandable for parents. You know, when you look at the tables of organization, they can easily find if they're, if they have questions, so. You know, just, again, I just think it's, they look, they look good, and I'm sure there'll be some questions by parents and students, but for the most part, I, it's been a great process.
Questions, I mean, they're reading them, so that's good.
Right.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you. We have just a few staff items this evening, beginning with number two and ending with number five, please.
And again, a motion to approve items two through five, please.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you. Final item this evening, item number six, I would ask that you consider approving the employee handbook for the twenty five, twenty six school year. That also was included in your packet at the end of last week with the changes and and notification. Thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve item six, please?
I'm moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally, any discussion?
Same comments that I had for the the other books, but, you know, I, I'm sure that that's impacted more with our administration and in the the labor groups that we end up working with, so. So that's all I had.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you.
Moving on to Report of the Treasure.
Good evening. As Mr. Nally was talking about the wonderful items from the biennial budget, I got the joy of watching or participating in a webinar today on all the different things that are coming down from that. And my favorite comment that kept getting made is, well, this is what the rule is, we're not sure how we're going to implement it yet. We're waiting to hear back from legislature, state auditors, a couple of different areas. So that was a fun thing to keep hearing repetitively. And how it kind of contradicts some other rules that are already in place, so that was fun. And the big takeaway I did want to make sure to share with you guys is that, kind of like we talked about a little bit earlier. They said with those overrides of the vetoes, summer is an interesting time because a lot of people aren't in. But they said, don't be shocked if these come up again and fall. That's more, the legislature will be more active. So they said, you know, it's not. Cause they were talking about everybody that has been advocating, they really think that's what helped with those different. Veto's not getting overrided was how much, um, the education community has been advocating for themselves essentially. So they said, stay on it this fall, um, because they are not going to be shocked if those come back up. So. Just kind of that fun little update for you all.
Can't wait.
I know.
Can't wait for fall now.
It's so great. Yeah, yay. Um, cause the one big thing of the got vetoed. Or no, that got vetoed, but got, um, put into play was the admin cap cost. The cap to admin cost for the district is 15%. They don't have, as of right now, any sort of punishment for that if you go over. So they were like, I think your name might end up on a list, but we don't know. So that's just kind of, that was my. I just sat there. I was like, okay, so they're telling us what to do, but. No repercussions if we don't do it. Cool.
And there's already a list.
Yeah.
That details where each district would fall.
They said the big thing they're advising us because these were, this was OSBA, OASBO and, um, BASA. They're the three, um, professional groups that, um, the school board superintendent and treasurers are all part of different ones. And they said, really? Just make sure you know your why. Why is your percentage up higher? What does it make? Why do you feel like? What does your district specifically have that the legislature doesn't take into consideration as to why your costs are up higher? If they are, because we don't even, oh, this is even the better part. We don't even know how they're determining what those admin costs all entail. So.
That was one of my questions because when it first came out, they didn't have a list of what the admin actually was.
No.
So they're putting a cap on something that they don't even make.
They didn't define.
Define.
Defined what the admin cost is. So how do you know if you're over or under because you don't even know what it is?
Yeah.
Right.
And it could be.
These two roles, is it also including principals? Is it also including?
Is it?
Assistant principals, is it directors, is it?
Is it your cost to maintain your district offices? It's, is it your costs for secretaries that are admin secretaries like? How, what all does this entail? Is it an EMUS code? Is it a, um, budgetary code? And then just to throw more fun into it, um, the state auditor's office has also released their new uniform standard accounts. Book. So we are in a perfect time to reclassify some things as well. Because they've taken out codes and added new ones in and different requirements on how to. So. That's when my office is fun is making sure all our account codes are correct and. So.
So. That is like, made my face hurt. So.
It made my brain hurt if him.
I guess in all reality though, like if we, um. Is there even an imaginary number like percentage that you're admin? Okay. Can't go. So then.
You're not supposed to go over 15.
So then for the meantime, is that the playground that you're playing in then?
Don't know.
Even know what number.
I guess, I guess I'm saying like.
I don't even.
Because what we don't want to happen is. Oh yeah. And by the way, it really is 15% and here are all the things. And I know we don't know all the things yet. Um. But I, I would hate to get caught in a situation where then, well, you can politely slide that back to us. You know what I mean? Or we're going to take that overage from here. So is there a, I guess, a, knowing what you do know. Is there a educated best practice that you would want to establish?
When they first pushed this out as potentially being part of the budget bill. Um, my professional organization said, here's what we think maybe they're going to say, but they haven't told us that this is. What they're pulling from because the numbers they came up with, nobody could back into. Um. So. There is an educated guess and we are right at that 15%. So just.
With all the things that we consider.
Well, with what they were labeling.
Okay.
Based on the parameters we were potentially given. Or that we were given that could potentially fall into the, what they're measuring. Um, yeah, we're right at that 15%. So.
May, maybe worthwhile to keep some good notation about why we're doing what and how we justify.
Yep.
Just in case those, they do ask you what the why is like, it's harder if they don't ask you for another three years because.
Yeah.
That's what it sounds like or a year and a half or whatever, then you have some good documentation of. What and why.
One of the other things that will affect us, which I had reported on previously in other meetings was that. They are going to change how they calculate the disadvantaged funding. They are moving. I think it's like a 75, 25 for fiscal year 26, um, 75% being your districts. Labeled population and 25% being, um, direct cert individuals. And then next year they'll be moving that figure a little bit more towards direct cert and away from ours. Because our costs are cur, not our costs, our counts are currently inflated being, um, fully CEP. So they're trying to get a happy medium between the two, but they're going to. For this budget cycle, they are slowly moving, um, those percentages based on those two figures.
And direct certification is those children that are involved in other services that would qualify them. Because of their involvement in other services.
Yes.
Correct. So there's no additional form that the family needs to fill out or to, um, indicate for them. It's a direct certification because of some of their other involvement.
Got it.
But just as my little plug, if you would like your fees waived, you do need to fill out an additional form with the district. It's on the district website.
And I mean, she looked right at the camera too. She was like.
Cause not only does that help with fee waivers for those students that need it, it also helps, um, ODE determine what our actual number is. So. Um, that's just one of the fun little things we, because we are full CEP last year. CEP, okay. I get mixed up between CEP and CCIP. Two totally different things, but. Because of that, it inflated our disadvantaged funding. And so we knew this was going to potentially come back down next, in our next budget year. They were, the state was going to address that, which they should. But that's, they finally gave us some figures in this budget. So. Last week I came back from vacation, so it was trying to catch up on everything and it was fun and crazy. And then today I had a child at home sex. So. This is my first thing. For the week. So if I'm a little out of sorts, I apologize. Okay. And then if we can move on to the recommendation. Um, tonight I have the June fiscal year financial report. Um, so a quick overview just of how we did, June is always my favorite one because that's everything's pretty much done for the year. It is cut off. So I can say for the year, we had an increase, a, a 12% increase in revenue. Our expenses on the flip side were up 16%. But we did have a small surplus this year of $237,000. So overall did very well. Just to kind of explain a couple of things, we did make some transfers into, um, some of our funds. That we're using for future planning our. O seven O, which is our capital projects fund, so that when all five buildings lose something, we have prepared or this building needs something, we have money set aside for it. And then we also, um, our, move some money into our. Severance fund, um, for some. Wonderful teachers that are, have been here quite a while. So they've earned some larger severance amounts. So. Um, our one-time nexus pipeline payment came in this year. So that was great. And we also moved that money into, um. Another fund because we also know that there's potentially some legislation that's going to keep our public utility revenue down in coming years. So to make up for that, we're going to save in it for right now.
One quick question on the nexus. So. That was for previous years because of the tax rate that they were paying less than what they now have been.
Right.
Ordered to pay. So now moving forward, it's at a higher rate. So we'll see a little bit of increase.
Yeah.
From what we've had in the previous years.
Yes.
Correct.
Uh, I think it was starting. January collection, I think we saw that start where they paid what they're actually supposed to pay.
Instead of the lesser.
Instead of the lesser amount. Yes. So you won't see it necessarily so much next year. Well. Is, just don't compare this year's public utility. You'd have to go back a year just to give us.
Right.
A better comparison. But yeah, so now they, I guess, are paying what they should be paying.
Until there's another.
Yeah.
Court case. Whatever.
All about getting all those energy costs down, you know? And increase in our other areas as well. Um, real estate was up and interest was up as well. That interest, every year I say, don't expect to see this high of numbers. They will probably go down. I'm going to tell you that again this year and we'll see what happens. We are seeing record. Numbers with the interest rate that we've been able to get a little bit of, um. Extra income with. But I don't for, no one foresees them staying this high. Um, and this is the last time you will have to hear me say this. Just a reminder, salaries were up this year 15% because we had S R write off last year that we were getting rid of. So that will no longer come out of my mouth. Oh God, I hope not. But. So the salaries were a little, when you see that they're up 15%, that's just a little bit more of an inflated amount due to S R being written off to last year. Benefits were down just slightly this year. One, one percent, um, and that could just be. A nu- numerous different reasons, um, whether it's, you know, different amount of employees on the plan. Or if they're taking different coverage, that all factors into that. So carryover balance. That was one of the big items on the budget. We ended the year after we made those trans, or I think it was actually before we made the transfers, we ended the year with 18% carryover of our expenditures. So I was not one that. I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing. I wasn't one going, oh my gosh, what if we have to meet 25%? Because we, we weren't close to that anyways. So I was. Everybody, that was one area where everybody spent bullets and I was like, hey, this year I'm okay. I'll worry about that next year, but. So. Now it's at 40%. If they want to bring that back, that's where it sat before it got vetoed. So. If they decide to bring that item back on, that's where it would be. And we're still in the clear on that. Sorry, I'm just flipping through some stuff real quick. Our food service fund, I did really want to report back on that. Um, we went full CEP. Um, this year, and I was super excited and happy to say that we. Only went down about $45,000 in the account. So it is something I would totally say we could sustain for a couple of years. Our, um.
The three-year application, I believe. So it will timeout eventually. We'll have to either reapply, um, and make that decision. Um, I believe it's a three-year application process. So.
So we start, like, we started with, um, just over 1.6 million and we're at just over 1.5 million. So. That didn't, I was getting a little nervous when I started the year and I was like, oh no, we've gone like 100,000 over. I'm like, if this keeps going, but. Because of the delay in reimbursements and stuff, summer is the best time to catch up on when those.
So again, to clarify, the 45,000 is what's coming out of our general fund.
No, that is just our food service fund. Sorry, I moved out of general fund and moved into the food service. Um, our food service fund is completely separate and that's just the food service fund. Um, so. With S R funds, that balance had gotten up quite a bit. Um, so we had more of a surplus in there. And then that made it so that making the decision to go full CEP. Very easy for us because we were actually having to find a spend down plan anyways. So this was our spend down plan was to go full CEP. And that would mean that we would not get fully reimbursed for kiddos that didn't actually qualify for free. We would only get reimbursed at free status for those students that do qualify. So the food service fund was going to have to make up some of that difference and we only had to make up 45,000 this year. So that's.
So 45,000 is coming out of the food service. Okay.
Our permanent improvement fund, we've. Used that this year on some. Safety upgrades to the district along with a forklift, um, computers, some vehicles for the district and our tennis court. Replacement and we pretty much spent what we came in. We kept that pretty, um. Netted almost zero on it. Our athletic funds, um, we did spend a little bit more this year. The athletic fund kicked in more on. Do you remember what? The scoreboard? Sorry. Bleachers.
Bleachers in the oxygen.
Oh, in the oxygen.
That was a project that we.
That we didn't have because that wasn't part of the building project.
Correct. And so, um, it was determined between some of the athletic, um, events that are handled in the oxygen, that there was a need for some seating. Um, we also do that, we utilize that space every single day, um, for classes. And so there's, there's some benefit to that as well. Um, but our athletic fund is, is, they have purchased those and those are ordered and. I don't know if I have a timeline. They're coming. They're on their way.
The supply chain on that one's a little bit.
Furniture gets a little weird.
Yeah. So, um, but we did well in our athletic fund. Normally we keep it pretty, Mr. Burnt keeps it very close on what he brings in is pretty much what he spends for the year and he doesn't eat too much at his balance. But like I said, with that additional, um. Expense of the bleachers this year, it ate in a little bit more than normal. Our, overall our real estate taxes collection.
Can I go back to athletics?
Yep.
Um, an additional cost there with that athletic piece is, um, the board for our, um. Being able to promote to our community, um, some of our historical aspects.
That'll be out of next year's money, but yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. But it will be coming from the athletic fund with some of those pieces. So.
Yeah.
Just being able to promote to our community, some of those historical, um. Aspects of our athletic, we are a very strong athletic community in Fremont and we have a lot to celebrate. So we're, we're putting some of those pieces together. That'll come out of what, that's just another example of what, um, what that fund can be used for.
Yep. Trying to think if there's anything else. Oh, I do want to, so self insurance, we had, I had spoken at the last board meeting of the year. That we were potentially going to move the money that the general fund had pitched over. Going to move that back into the general fund from self insurance. When we ended the year, if I had taken that money out, we would have been back in the 200,000, which was about where we were at when I kicked the money over. So we did not move it back. We really hope these cost-saving measures that we have put into play. And as interesting as this is going to sound. And as interesting as this is going to sound, summer is a downtime for insurance usage. So I probably won't have as many claims. I usually actually build up more of a balance over summer. So we'll reevaluate that. Fun balance as we go along, but I did end up leaving that $325,000 there just because we don't, we can't have that fund get too low, especially when I can have a week where I get an insurance bill for $125,000. Just no warning, nothing. It's just, hey, here it is. So hopefully, um, some of those high claimant costs that we've been implementing some programs with will lessen, um, to really help that fund overall. Okay. So that's some highlights on how our year ended for the fiscal year. And then if I can get, uh, approval on that.
I have a motion to approve item seven, please.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Lewis. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes. Motion's approved.
Okay. And then item number eight, that is an appropriation change. Um, we are waiting to get a good, solid estimate on how much the connector building is going to cost. The OO4 fund that's listed, that is one of our, um, that's where the leftover money was housed from the building project. So this is strictly funds that, cash that was in that account that we had not appropriated to spend this year. But after we got a good estimate of where that project's going to come in, um, I talked to Mr. Anway and told him if he goes over that number, he's going to have to beg and plead and sign his grandchildren all the way. So he has to stick to that number. Just kidding. Just kidding. Not really. But, um, so we got a good number on that so that, if we can get that appropriated, then every, we can start spending the money and getting that. I think they're getting ready. I know we've, we've spent a little bit of money.
Quote.
On some initial.
Quotes are in, um, and we were hoping to maybe have some of those begin to, to start to show. They're not quite ready for that yet. So, um, hopefully by our August agenda, you'll start to see some of those come to the board agenda, moving us forward.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve item eight, please?
All moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes. Motion's approved. All right. Moving on to board member communications. Uh, Don?
Yes. Um, just want to welcome Stacy Gibson, um, here from the Family and Children First Council. She was here for the earlier meeting and chose to stay and, you know, see what, what goes on at one of our meetings. And, uh, the Family and Children First Council does wonderful things in our community, bringing organizations that support our children and, um, together. And just, you know, from past experience, knowing the impact of that group and that coordination is just real critical to why I think we have been very successful in a lot of areas in our community. So thank you and thanks for attending a meeting. Also, um, Mr. Boss, um, thanks for coming over and, you know, sharing the information with us tonight. You know, special ed and a lot of the things that are going on with the kids are why we're, why we're here to, to serve. So thank you. And then Mr. Price, when I mentioned, um, my feelings earlier, one of the things that hit me was, uh, that I think maybe, maybe we're on the same wavelength with is, and being a Browns fan, uh, you know, estate spending or putting 600 million over, uh, that really, um, if those dollars could come over to education would be, uh, a fantastic thing. So I stand corrected on that issue.
That was one of the, as a Steeler fan, that was one of the lanes as a citizen of the state of Ohio. Right. Not sure that, uh, that money is well spent by helping a Brown stadium. So there are.
I agree.
Like you said earlier, there are many needs in our state.
Yeah.
Don't know if that's one that public dollars should be spent on, but.
We agree. That's all I had. All right.
Sarah?
Uh, just a reminder that the tax-free holiday or tax relief holiday is, um, August 1st through the 14th. Um, information on our district website, um, uh, for parents and families to, to access, just to get a little bit of relief as we all head out for school shopping. August 1st is the, uh, official start to all fall sports and, um, including marching band. So that's really exciting. Um, I know marching band starts next Monday, um, for, for two weeks. So I know all the fall sports teams have been working hard, um, and we're just excited to see, um, all the kiddos involved. Um, I would definitely like to challenge the community, um, as, as we watch our, or have the ability to support our kiddos, whether it's, um, through a sporting event or coming to, um, the school for a band concert or choir concert. Our music department is wonderful, um, plays musicals. I would just like to challenge the community to really show out this year, uh, to support our kiddos in whatever, whatever we have going on in the name of increasing our, our school spirit. Kiddos need to feel supported, um, by adults and, um, members of the community. Uh, so let's, let's get that together this year.
Lori?
Um, not too much. We have much on our agenda, but, uh, thanks, Mr. Boss, for all the information. Good to know that things are going smoothly and working well. I'm sure everybody's having a great summer, trying to stay cool and not get soaked at the same time. You got one or the other or both. So, but yeah, I know my grandson's excited. He's looking forward to school starting. He always does. But he's doing a camp at the community theater, which they're going to be doing the, um, most epic birthday party ever this weekend. So he's got a speaking part. So, but yeah, that's a fun thing to do too. So, but well, and that's it.
Um, Jim, thanks for coming in. Thanks for all the work that you and your department do. There's a lot to it. Now that my daughter is an intervention specialist, I hear more and more and I'm like, oh, I'm glad I baked cookies. Makes, makes it much easier, but, but thank you for that. She loves being a part of that group. And, and what she does, she wasn't sure originally, she thought she just wanted to be a regular teacher. Now that she's doing it, she loves it. So, um, thanks for all the work that you guys do and, and switching over from the ESC, I'm glad that that transition has been good. It seems like on all points, North Point has just, I mean, it's really just been seamless all the way around, considering that we're transitioning a lot of programs and individuals and everything else with that, that it's, it could have been a hot mess, but between the two districts, between the ESC and us, everybody's doing a great job. So thank you to everyone involved in that, that, that's huge, um, with that. So August 22nd, first football game. I'm ready. I'm ready for some football.
Yes.
I'm not allowed to bring that date up because that means the start of school is closer, but that's okay. I can say it here. She's not here to hit me. So. I'm ready. So, um, with that, um, I'll make a motion to move into executive session under letter O. I could have a second, please.
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis. Any discussion? Um, just for public notice, um, there will be no action taken by the board after our executive session will adjourn immediately after we're out of executive session. So no action will be taken further. So. All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Motion is approved. We are now in executive session.